To start with a quick introduction, I think we all are aware, but we are here today for a second day of public hearing and meeting in response to the filing of petition by owners and electors in the town of Hamburg, which they request that the property described in the petition to be detached from Merrill Area Public School District and attached to the Athens School District. Property description of the petition was read at the board meeting on February 16th, 2021. The petitions are filed under 117.12 Wisconsin statutes, which sets forth the procedures for small territory detachments. Among other requirements of the state statute 117.12 provides the opportunity for the electors and owners who sign the petitions to address the Board of Education regarding the petitions. Specifically, 117.13/12/3 provides that the board is to give the electors and owners who sign the petition an opportunity to meet with the school board to present their reasons for the proposed reorganization. Accordingly, we held a public hearing meeting on February 16th and are holding a second public hearing or meeting today. This is an informal hearing, but we will record all of the information presented. Please speak distinctly so that we can be sure that your information is recorded. At the meeting on February 16th, in line with the statute, the petitioners, those people asking the board to transfer the territory had the opportunity to meet with the board to provide reasons supporting their petitions. Board members had the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Then at the meeting on the 16th, other members of the public had the opportunity to be heard. Board members again had the opportunity to ask clarifying questions if they had. Following the oral testimony from petitioners and other members of the public, a board member read the written comments also submitted to the board. Finally, at the meeting on the 16th, the administration presented information on the applicable criteria under the statute. Moving into tonight's meeting, the following will be the order of the meeting. First, the administration will be presenting additional information pertaining to the proposed detachment, including results of a survey and the fiscal impacts of proposed detachment petitions. Second, petitioners will have additional opportunity to address the board to provide information requested at the meeting on February 16th and information in response to the information presented by the administration. Mr. Brown Wade, while not a petitioner, will be allowed to address the board at this time as we allowed at February 16th meeting. Third, citizens who are not petitioners in the pending detachment proceedings will then have the opportunity to address the board with respect to the proposed reorganization. After each of these, the board will have the opportunity once again to ask questions. Fourth, we will read any written statements submitted since the February 16th meeting and prior to tonight's meeting. I know I did have one such request, and I believe that person is here and we will call on her at that time. Following all presentations to the board, the board may move into executive session to confer with legal counsel regarding the information presented. Following an executive session, the board will come back in open session to discuss the criteria listed in section 117.15 and take action to deny or grant the petitions for the detachment. The first order of business that we then have for this evening will be information from the administration led by Dr. Sample, our superintendent and director of finance, Brian Dash, who will be called on accordingly. Dr. Sample?
Thank you, Governor. I will be presenting information for the grades 6, 12 students that reside in both the Maple Grove attendance area as well as those that reside in the area sought for detachment. The number of students attending sixth grade 6 through 12, whether it be the middle school, high school, BVA, that live in the Maple Grove attendance area are 79. Of those 79, the number of students living in the area sought for detachment is 34. We also have a next category, a number of open enrolled students attending the middle school, high school, or BVA that live in the Maple Grove attendance area is 2. That is because their current status is open enrolled, but since their open enrollment, they have since moved to the greater Maple Grove attendance area. So that's why you'll see that number. So that was students. The number of families attending middle school, high school, BVA that live in the greater Maple Grove attendance area are 56. There are 27 families living in the area sought for detachment. And the number of families of open enrolled that are attending the middle school, high school, or BVA that live in the greater Maple Grove attendance area is 1, 1 family with that move. We surveyed the families. There were 32 families. One of them, one of the emails got kicked back, so there was 31 families in all. We had 19 responses, 61%, a little bit greater than 61% return rate on the survey. Three questions and one and an opportunity to comment. First question, did you sign either the elector or owner petition to detach from the Merrill Area School District? 57.9 said yes, 42.1 said no. Question number two, are you in favor of detaching from the Merrill Area School District to the Athens School District? Of those 19 respondents, 63.2% said yes, 36.8% said no. And finally, question three, if the detachment is approved, will you open enroll your son or daughter into the Merrill Area School District? 61.1% said yes, 38.9% said no. The one comment that I received, I don't think we should keep it open. There are many updates that need to be done with that building. If you have a handicap wheelchair or walkers, that school isn't set up for that. I get the history, but what are the ratios of students that go there and the cost of upkeep? And that was my one and only comment.
Any questions from this information provided by administration? All right. No questions on that, Dr. Sample. Thank you. This time we'll hear from Director of Finance, Brian Dash.
Just got a minute to get set up to present my screen here so everyone can see the data that I'm going to share. All right. We worked, we contracted with PMA Securities to assist us in looking at the financial analysis and developing a detachment scenario for Maple Grove and what the detachment of Hamburg would look like on the budget and the property tax levy. So what I'll do, you have a copy, a hard copy of the presentation in front of you. I'm going to skip ahead. The first page there is just some background information about the district, school district facts. And then we get into the second page, actually page four, and we discuss some of the variables that we placed into the scenarios that we're going to look at here, the financial scenarios. So we assumed, we looked at enrollment. There are 77, and the enrollment, let me back up. The enrollment was taken as of the second Friday in January count. At that date, there were 77 residents in the Hamburg area in the boundaries that are to be detached. 54 of them are attending one of the district schools, BK through 12. 23 of them are open rolling outside of the district to another, to another district. We're assuming an equalized value growth of 2.5% per year in the five years that we're forecasting out. In 2020, we're assuming the equalized value, well, we're not assuming, the equalized value for the town of Hamburg in 2020 was $54,544,822. And that is the value of the land within the boundaries that have been identified to be detached. We aren't assuming any per pupil revenue limit increases or any categorical increases. So what we're doing is we're assuming current state law, state funding for the next five years. So we're not assuming any of the increases that the governor just released in his budget. Staffing reductions, right now there's, there's five and a half teachers out there. We're assuming a reduction of three. We don't know for sure right now at this particular point in time whether or not we'd be able to reduce all five and a half or, or not. And so we, we kind of hedged our bets a little bit and assumed that we would still need at least two FTE, two and a half for, for next year. We would reduce a halftime principal and then a secretary and custodian, so that's been taken out. Transportation remains to be seen, but we are assuming on the low end, a reduction of around, of around $50,000. And then we assumed reductions in currently budgeted purchased services and capital equipment, $35,845 and $36,095 respectively. So using those assumptions, we built a scenario and we looked at, and this scenario is on page six of your handout. And this is a little difficult to see, so let me zoom in a little bit. So we started with a base scenario, which was just looking at, casting forward the status quo of the district currently as it stands right now. So we didn't assume anything as far as Jefferson. We left Jefferson in for the five years of the forecast. We did not assume renewal of the referendum in April of '22. And we didn't assume that Maple Grove was going to close outside of detachment anytime in the next five years. The purpose for doing that was to isolate the variables that we're, we're looking at tonight to really zero in on just what the effect would be on the detachment of $54 million worth of value, property value, and what the effect 77 students would have on the revenue limit. So we, we thought that by adding in some of these other things that might be happening over the next five years, it would kind of muddy the waters and make it a little bit more difficult for you to see the effect itself of just Maple Grove. So by doing that, the top scenario on page six, that base scenario, is that status quo scenario. So we're looking at a deficit of about $765,808 for next year. And then as we move forward, you can see the deficit grows to about $9.4 million in the last year of the scenario, fiscal year '26. Now again, this assumes no changes to reductions, or reductions to expenditures as well. So we're assuming that everything remains status quo and that expenditures are increasing as they have been increasing over the last couple of years. So then from that scenario, we, we put in then the assumptions that we just got, got done talking about in the previous page. So when we do that, we see the reduction in membership, pulling out of the property valuation, and then the mill rate, and then finally the deficit, the projected surpluses and deficits. So in terms of Fund 10 expenditures and revenues in the shortfall that we look at in terms of the surpluses and deficits, next year, that $765,000 deficit that we were projecting turns into $146,000 surplus. Going out, however, you see in fiscal year '26 that the deficit is just a little bit higher, a $100,000 higher than what it would have been if, or in, in the base scenario. The bottom setup, and we can see this easier in the bottom setup, in the bottom table there, you can see the differences. So you can see the 77 students that came out of the third Friday membership count. You can see the effect on the tax levy. So what this is saying here in fiscal year '22 is that the tax levy is actually $201,000 less under detachment than it would have been if, if Hamburg stays the same. And you can see that going, going throughout. Another way to look at that is the mill rate. The mill rate does go up a little bit these first three years, and then it goes down in the final two years. But overall, we're looking at just a couple of dimes on the, on the mill rate, so not a tremendous impact there. Now with the major expense assumptions, you can see the impact of the expenditures that we're taking out overall. And then you can see then the difference in, well, actually it's looking at just salaries and benefits. And then you can see the total fund 10 revenues and expenditures and the difference. So we're looking at a $911,000 swing to the positive next year. So that's, that's resulting in that $146,000 surplus that we saw in the detachment scenario. And then you see this decline over the next three years. And then in fiscal year '25 and '26, we start to see higher deficits than what we would have seen in the, in the base scenario. The reason for this is there's a, there's a three-year impact. The FTE impact is a three-year rolling average impact on the revenue limit. And so we don't see the entire reduction in the revenue limit right off the bat. And so that, that comes off over three years, and then you see that full reduction in the revenue limit in fiscal year '25. And that's why you see a drop from $404,000 to the good to $99,000 in the red. So that's the operating, operational expenses and revenues. Any questions before I move into the assets and liabilities portion? Okay, on the next page-
I have a question for you here.
Just a quick, quick clarifying question. How is the mill rate projected? Like what, what goes into that?
The, the mill rate is simply the total tax levy divided by the equalized value of the property district, or property values of the district.
But how are we forecasting into the future whether the mill rate would be?
Basically, because we're able to forecast what the, what the tax levy is going to be and then what the property values are going to be. And so we're just taking those forecasts and property tax levies and dividing by the forecasted property value of the district. And we're getting an estimated mill rate for the next five years.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Now we get into the, kind of the difficult portion of this. So in the statute, in the Wisconsin statutes that talk about detachment and dissolution of school districts, section, statute 660235, there's a requirement that assets and liabilities be divided between the districts in proportion to the valuation of a property being detached to the, to the, our district's entire property valuation. So based upon most recent equalized values, the town of Hamburg makes up 4.11% of the total equalized value. And that's as of the fall of 2020. And the TID out means just tax incremental district. They don't include the, the tax incremental financing districts that are within, in the Merrill district. Now, the statute itself does not define what assets and liabilities are to be included in this. And it does not include, it doesn't define, well, let me back up. So in, you know, school district set of books, we, we deal with funds. So you've heard me talk about the general fund, the special fund, the food service fund. Each one of those funds has its own balance sheet. And on that balance sheet, it has its own assets and liabilities. So the statute doesn't define what funds, assets, and liabilities are to be included. And it also does not define which specific assets and liabilities are to be included in this calculation. We've contacted DPI, we've talked to some other districts. The closest, the closest analogy, or situation that's analogous to ours was the dissolution of the Palmyra Eagle School district several years back. And even then, the, they had a financial analysis done by a competing company. And that company wasn't able to clearly define the impact on, on the assets and liabilities with, that it would have on the district. And so, you know, some examples of some assets that we would be talking about would be existing facilities. So capital assets like the buildings, equipment, things like that, cash investments, current receivables for revenue that's due us but hasn't been moved yet. Liabilities, on the liability side, we've got outstanding loans, bonds, notes, unfunded post-employment benefit liability, sick leave liability, things like that. None of these are specifically identified in the statute as to which would be included, with the exception, I believe, of cash and long-term debt. Now what I did in, on the next page is we included from our audited financial statements as of June 30, 2020, an example listing of what our assets and liabilities would be. Now this is, this is a statement of net acquisition. It's not the balance sheet. So the balance sheet is actually different for school districts. Public school balance sheet doesn't include long-term liabilities and it doesn't include capital assets. It doesn't include post-employment benefits or the pension-related amounts and things like that that you see on this one. So essentially what it's, it's listing, so again, what, what we're unsure of is which of these assets and liabilities would be included. Now the statute does say that a process is open to negotiation between the two districts and mutually agree upon calculation or method of dividing the assets and liabilities can be agreed upon by the districts. And that's typically, that's the answer that we've been given, I've been given by DPI as well, is that that's typically a, a give and take between the two districts. And sometimes that has in the past gotten to be rather contentious, that, that particular process. But these are some potential assets and liabilities that we could be looking at. Our total net position at the end of the fiscal year '20 was $24.7 million. One thing to note, the real estate values, so up here under capital assets, part of this happens to be, a lot of that is our buildings. Now, that's a depreciated amount. And so it's not the actual fair market value of our buildings. It's a, it's a depreciated amount for governmental accounting standards purposes. So if a detachment does take place, real estate values would have to be determined by appraisals. And those values could significantly vary from what we're seeing on the statement of net position. And so again, the, the last page here is just a kind of a disclaimer that, you know, they're not intended, that, that statement, that net position is just a listing of all of our assets and liabilities for all funds. It's, it's not attempting to identify any particular assets and liabilities that we can, should, or would not include in any calculation of a detachment scenario. And so the final calculation could be quite a bit different than what's outlined in, in that statement. The remaining pages in the PMA is, document here is just the maps of the boundary areas and other supplemental information that I won't go over. You've already probably seen that from the prior meeting. I will say there was in, there was some question about section 26. If I can find it, yeah, this, this little piece here on, in Hamburg was not included in the legal description of the petition. That, the value of that parcel, however, was included in the analysis that you've seen here tonight. And there were no students that we identified that live in that section 26. And so with or without it, the financial analysis doesn't change. It, it remains the same. Any questions?
Mr. Smith?
So to summarize, the, when we get to the assets and liability situation, which is kind of the other, that has questions and still remain, that legal exchanges will, I assume, carry out post-decision. But the net position right now stands at the $24 million. And if we take that by the 4.1%, basically the, the risk is the need to transfer about a million dollars to the Athens as far as assets go.
As far as assets, yeah, that's not necessarily cash assets.
Correct.
And, and to give you an example of the, of the ballpark that we're looking at in terms of variability of that number, if you look at just the operational fund balance, the, the Fund 10 balance sheet, the net assets over liabilities in Fund 10 is that $6 million fund balance number that we keep coming around about. And so that balance sheet looks very different than the statement, than assets. And so that statute does not clearly identify which, which statement, which assets that you are to use in determining the, the division of the assets and liabilities. So, so in this case, if you were to base it up, the statement in that assets, you would be correct. And it would just be that, that assets. And, and a, a big portion of that would likely be possibly the building and contents of land.
Okay, so then the range then, and the interpretation is, it could be anywhere from the fund balance of $6 million to the net position of $24 million on 4.1%. So MAPS might need to transfer anywhere from $250,000 to $1 million in assets. Like if you had to come up with a range of possible risk on transfer assets, $250,000 to $1 million would be a fair range at this point in the game?
Based on what I know at this time, yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's a fair, fair statement.
And then backing up to the actual, the scenarios or the projections, what I'm reading is if detachment is approved over a period of three years, the MAPS would gain 1.984, so $1,984,780, near $2 million in basically revenue, what we'd use for operations?
In reduced expenses.
Reduction of expenses?
Yeah. And yeah, I suppose in, primarily that's from reduced expenses. You get into declining enrollment exemption and hold harmless exemptions and stuff, and that gets a little muddy, but for the most part, it's going to be due to reduced expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any additional board member clarifying questions for Mr. Dash? Any additional board member clarifying questions for Mr. Dasher? I don't see any other hands up. Anything else to add to that, Mr. Dasher?
No, not right now.
All right, thank you. At this time, we do have three parties that we will treat as petitioners, possibly a board. Thank you, Tammy. So, I, I will let you choose what order you would like to present in. Dr. Serri, Maple Grove Foundation, Peter Fromway, Cindy Artis, and Mike Hennessy. So, the order that I did have, that was Dr. Serri followed by Peter, followed by Cindy, followed by Mike. But please introduce yourself as you step to the microphone, and we will alleviate that as we go.
Thank you. I brought Stevie Cox in with me, our vice president. We're just going to be reading from some clarifying questions that the board had asked. And, hold on one second. We have some handouts, just so that you don't need to write everything down. One of them is going to be the clarification document that I'm going to read from. And there's also, I think, a copy of the presentation from last week in there and along with some other handouts. So, in regards to some of the clarifications that the board had asked us to look into last week, I'm actually looking at the summary of arguments document. And we had added some things to that document to clarify what the board had wanted to see. So, for number one, there was no change in that information, that we had anything to add to that. For number two, there were quite a few questions about the educational needs of students. And we do think that is important. I was able to seek out some additional information from the Athens School District. And I'm going to, just for the sake of not missing out on anything, just read from that document tonight. I believe the first paragraph is the same as we had last week. So, I'm not going to reread that, but I'm going to go into some of the extracurricular programs offered through the Athens District. So, at the elementary school level, they have the Little League, Wrestling, Basketball, Volleyball, Soccer, and Football. And Middle and High School, the opportunities include cross-country, Football, Volleyball, Basketball, Wrestling, Boys Baseball, Girls Softball, and Track. At the middle and high school level, as far as outside of sports, they have Future Farmers of America, Forensics, Math League, Musical, Quiz Bowl, and Student Council. And then, at the high school level only, we have Economic Decathlon, Color Guard, Faith Christian Academy, Family Career and Community Leaders of America, Future Business Leaders of America, Homecoming Court, Marching Band, National Honor Society, Pep Band, Prom Court, Science Olympiad, Show Choir, Skills USA, and Student Council. As far as curricular programs, so students who reside in the territory will have access to these programs and activities through the Athens School District. Upgrades to the current school forest, which include running and hiking trails, workout stations, frisbee golf course, and community garden. Ample dual-credit opportunities through North Central Technical College for students to earn college credits while taking classes at Athens High School, including courses in the areas of accounting, Microsoft Office, Agronomy, Animal Science, Math, Furniture Manufacturing, STEM, Auto Service, Machine Tool, Welding, Social Sciences, Food Service, Science, and Communications. And looking at the list provided to me by the superintendent of Athens, there are 64 college credits available for students to earn in the current year. There are also distance learning opportunities for Athens High School students to take college courses through UW Stevens Point, North Central Technical College, and UW O'Clare. There are opportunities for Athens High School students to take online courses that are not available at Athens High School through the UW system, the Rural Virtual Academy, and CISA 10 Distance Learning. There is a cooperative education opportunity for Athens High School students to learn job skills and gain experience for future employment during the school day. And six students are currently enrolled this year. The opportunity for Athens High School students to participate in one- and two-year programs of youth apprenticeship exists with 13 students currently enrolled. The Athens School District applied for a FabLab grant this year, which the district anticipates receiving. Additionally, Athens School District recently received a $39,000 grant to purchase a new CNC mill, which will be used in the curriculum. Advanced placement courses are available to Athens High School students, including AP Calculus, AP Biology, AP English, AP Government Politics, AP World History, AP United States History. Foreign language courses are available through the Sweeten Network, including French, German, and Spanish. Athens High School offers students the opportunity to tailor their high school experience according to individual goals and needs. Robust hands-on, science and technology-based courses are available to students, including focused programs of study. So, these programs of study include a list of courses that, if chosen, the student would use to create their schedule for their entire high school career. And those focused programs of study are listed on the document, if you can read them. They include Animal Science, Food Science, a number of sciences, as well as Visual Arts, 2D and 3D, Management, Accounting, Programming and Software, Marketing, Restaurant and Food Beverage Services, Teaching and Training, Sports Science, Health Science, Government and Public Administration, Human Services, Law and Public Safety, Construction, Engineering and Technology, and Manufacturing, Transportation, and Logistics. It's like one altogether. Also, to address the board's concerns, and I, I know many parents' concerns as well regarding special education, it's a very important topic. We got some additional information, which was provided by the superintendent of Athens, as well as the Marathon County Special Education Consortium. So, because this is so important, I am going to read it, just so that we all hear the same thing. Students who reside in the territory proposed for detachment, attachment will be well-supported in their special education needs. The Marathon County Special Education Consortium is a consortium of six schools in Marathon County. The Special Education Agency provides necessary services, both direct and indirect, to students within the consortium. The Athens School District is a member of the consortium. The Athens School District, in conjunction with the Marathon County Special Education, plans to support students with disabilities who attend Maple Grove Charter School, as well as students with disabilities attending Athens Middle and High School. The local education agency, in this case, Athens School District, holds the responsibility of providing support to students who are identified with disabilities and are in need of accessing special education services. Public school districts must fulfill their responsibilities to provide free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities. And with this in mind, there is no cap put on how many students can access special education supports and services through the Athens School District. Students who are eligible and who are in need of special education will be supported through the Individual Education Program, IEP process, similar to what exists at Maple Grove and Merrill currently. In regards to interfacing with preschool programs, the Athens School District, like all districts, has obligations to implement procedures for early identification of children with disabilities. Marathon County Special Education and the Athens School District have historically had a strong relationship with the Marathon County Birth to Three program. Marathon County Special Education is also the manager and provider for the Birth to Three services for Marathon, Lincoln, and Lake Lake Counties. State guidelines on timelines and evaluation are followed in order to be, for easy transition for individuals with disabilities who have already been identified as having needs and potentially requiring service upon reaching the age of three. If Maple Grove becomes part of the Athens School District, the transition of special needs and disabled students to the Athens School District should be seamless. In this case, students who have already been identified as having a disability and in need of special education have the right to continue to receive special education services from the Athens School District. Although families may be introduced to new professionals who will be delivering services to children, these services will continue to be designed by the IEP team, which includes the parents and guardians. When a student moves from one district to another, the new resident district IEP team reviews the program in place and adopts it. In this manner, continuity can be expected for students with disabilities. In a similar manner, continuity can be expected for students moving from the elementary to the middle school. Although the student and family will meet new service providers, the IEP remains a legal document that must be maintained by the IEP team within the local education agency, which is Athens School District in this case. The Athens School District, like all public local education agencies, must ensure that there is a continuum of placements available to meet the needs of all children with disabilities. Placement refers to the child's educational environment, i.e. services and supports in the IEP, the location and the building or facility that the child will attend. Athens will maintain the responsibility to ensure that there is a continuum of placements available to meet the needs of all children with disabilities. This means they maintain responsibility for having a range of available services, locations, and sites, which include in-district neighborhood schools such as Maple Grove. This continuum of services allows the IEP team to determine an appropriate environment for the child to learn. The Athens School District is not required by the state to provide full continuums of services within every school building within its jurisdiction. Therefore, it is possible that some services, if necessary according to need, may be provided at locations other than Maple Grove. The IEP team will determine the services, the location, and the building or facility of placement. This is a similar process that is used currently with Maple Grove as a part of the Merrill School District. Do you have any questions regarding the services for special ed, the curricular and extracurricular, before we clarify it further?
You may continue.
Okay, thank you. Stevie wants to do. Okay, so I'll move on to number three. And number three just talks about the territory that's to be detached. The detachment of the proposed territory from MAPS and its detachment to Athens will have no adverse effect on the program of MAPS in that MAPS has already decided to close Maple Grove, the only school within the area proposed for detachment. The detachment will have no negative effect on curriculum or extracurricular activities of MAPS, while in the addition of a unique, successful charter school in the Athens District will enhance curriculum and extracurricular options. Denial of the proposed detachment and the consequent closing of Maple Grove would adversely affect community spirit and the pride parents and students have in school. And then, I'll just, to address the, the district and the board's concerns for students residing in the territory proposed for detachment who may wish to open enrollment to the MAPS district. You cited there the WIA website that this was, this information was taken from in regards to open enrollment varsity sports. Students entering ninth and 10th grade as open enrollees have unrestricted eligibility for extracurriculars. Students entering 11th grade as open enrollees are restricted to non-varcity that year, but they can be varsity their senior year. Students entering 12th grades as open enrollees are restricted to non-varcity that year. However, the, the residence and transfer requirement may be waived if, if requested in advance of the student participating at the new school, either by a member school or on behalf of one of its students, and upon presentation of documentation detailing extenuating circumstances. Such documentation must include communications from A, the parents, B, person or persons with whom the student is living within the requesting school's attendance boundaries, and C, the school officials within those attendance boundaries, parents reside. Depending on the nature of the extenuating circumstances, eligibility may be limited to non-varcity competition except, except for in situations involving transfer after a student's fourth consecutive semester following entry into grade nine. When asked if the Athens District and School Board would be willing to consider waivers to allow open-enrolled students to participate in varsity sports, Superintendent Mastin stated that he would be in support of the WIA guidelines that allow the students who open enroll to play varsity sports as long as the required waiver was submitted. So, then we move on to the bus. Any questions there, I guess, before we move on? Okay, so then we'll move on to another important topic that we were discussing, which is the busing rules. And you'll see that we cited the DPI website there under Parent Education Options, Transportation and Public School Information. So, generally, parents are responsible for providing transportation to and from the school for students attending public school under an open enrollment program. Parents of open-enrolled students eligible for free or reduced-priced meals may be eligible for reimbursement of the transportation costs. And there we cited the link there too, that talks about the reimbursement process. The non-resident school district is prohibited from picking up or dropping off students within the boundaries of the resident school district without permission from the resident school district. Athens could give permission to MAPS to pick up students living within the newly detached area to foster a cooperative relationship. MAPS could also give permission to Athens to pick up students living within a portion of the Merrill district. These arrangements would need to be decided by the school boards. To put that in a little bit of a closer perspective, I have just kind of, in my own personal experience here. My residence located, is located on Einer Creek Lane, which is formerly Seventh Lane. And MAPS picks up our, our students from the Enera driveway at 6:35 in the morning. Our neighbor's residence is 200 yards from our house, driveway to driveway, also located on the west side of the road. And the Athens bus picks up their students at 7:05, taking the same path past our residence as the MAPS bus, but about 30 minutes prior. So, there are two buses very close in time and proximity in the area. So, with a little bit of planning and agreeing on a drop-off or transfer spot, we could make transportation arrangements work for students of both districts involved. School districts may choose to provide transportation to pupils whom transportation is not required by law. State Statute, Section 121.542(c) specifies that a annual or special meeting of a common union high school or the school board unified school district may elect to provide transportation for pupils who are not required to be transported. In addition, Statute 121.5451 allows a district to provide transportation to a people who attends a public or private school and is not required to be transported if the district receives a request from that pupil's parent or guardian. Superintendent Mastin stated that this is a consideration Athens School District has granted to other districts in the past, usually because it involves doing what's best for the students and parents involved. Any questions on that before we move on?
Okay, well, I'll move to the end of the document here. Number four, really, there is no noticeable change or there was no clarification needed. And then, number five talks about the fiscal impacts, and I know Mr. Brian Dasher spoke to that. The only thing that we would have to add to that is John Smith's question about how much tax levy. And I think Brian may have touched on this, but that's covered there as well. So, according to Don Check, the town of Hamburg clerk, in town of 2020, Hamburg dispersed $469,880 in tax levy to Merrill School District. And it is compared to the full tax levy, and I have the 2018 numbers because that's what I found publicly available at the cited, cited site, I guess, from the Department of Revenue. Merrill has a total tax levy of $10,671,222. That was in 2018, so I'm sure Brian's numbers were a little bit more updated than that. So, we can see that it's about 4%. Hamburg represents about 4%, and I think Brian spoke to that as well. So, it's kind of duplicative, but we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And then, I guess, okay, so this wasn't in, it didn't really fit in the document, but I know that Dr. Sample spoke to the survey. And Maria Philby had a request about, you know, what number and percent of the petitioners are current Maple Grove parents, which I feel like was kind of answered with the survey, but those were only those who responded. So, Dr. Donon was able to give me a list of parents who reside in the Maple Grove area for detachment. And they were broken into current Maple Grove parents and then parents of Prairie River Middle School or Merrill High School students who had attended Maple Grove. So, first of all, the Merrill, sorry, the Maple Grove parents. There were 16 parents on the list that I got who live within the territory. And 12 of the 16 had signed the petition, which is 75% of the parents. These 12 who had signed the electors petition represent about 4% of the total elector petitioners. As for current Prairie River Middle School and Middle, sorry, Merrill High School parents of, who live in the area for detachment and their children had gone to Maple Grove, there are currently 20 parents. And 15 of those parents had signed the electors petition, which represents about 75% again of those parents had signed. Of the 15, the 15 who signed represent 5% of the total electors signing the petition. So, when you add up the Maple Grove parents and the Prairie River Middle School and Merrill High School parents, you get a total of 36 parents living in High School parents, you get a total of 36 parents living in that area, 27 of which have signed the electors petition. I looked at the electors petition, I know there are two petitions, not all families' own property, so that's why I was looking at the electors petition. So 27 of them had signed, and that represents, represents 75% of those parents. The 27 signatures represent 9% of the total elector petitioners. So kind of a conclusion of that, those who sign the petitions are, they could be Merrill parents currently, they may have gone there themselves, they may have planned to send their children in the future, so this is really for all of those voters and taxpayers in that area. Any clarifications on the counts of the petitioners who are parents or, what was the other thing? Oh, the tax valuation. Okay, and I think Peter's going to wrap it up with number six.
Mr. President, could I approach, I'd like to refer to a map.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you as the school board and Superintendent John Sample and our financial director, Brian Dasher. I also like to thank the attendance of Jeff Mastin and the administration and also the school board president of Athens this evening. I'm going to be speaking to specifically the matter of Section 26 that was keenly brought up this evening additionally by Brian Dasher, our financial director here at MAPS, and at the last meeting on the 17th by Superintendent John Sample. The thought pattern is that Section 26 is not part of the description, and I want to speak to that and help in that matter. In your folders, you'll find excerpt from Attorney David Moore, now in and out, and it's addressed to, of course, your attorney and also the Athens attorney, Tony Rinning. And I'd like to read the middle paragraph excerpt from it. This is a kind of a cream document, and I'll be speaking to the other documents that are cream in that folder. Attorney Tony Moore, David Moore. The petitions describe the property in three ways. First, the property is described as all portions of the Merrill Area Public Schools District. Angie is holding a map of the town of Hamburg, that is the entire town of Hamburg, 36 square sections. Section 26 is one of those. Now, both petitions are identical in many ways, and they're identical in the way, in the three ways that they described as per Statute 117.12, the petitioners shall describe the territory proposed to be detached. They're described in three ways. First of all, as Attorney Moore indicates, the property is described as all portions of the Merrill Area Public Schools District. This is the top sentence on the next documents within your folder. Each petition you have before you, each petition starts, page E, page two, with this wordage: Legal description of territory proposed for detachment. The following detachment area encompasses all portions of the Merrill Area Public Schools District located within the town of Hamburg. Now, let's look at the map that Angie is holding. That's the town. The pink area within that square is the Athens School District. That represents 1952, School District Number Four. The yellow area is the Merrill Area Public School District. The areas that you cannot rightly see because they're so very small and few are an orange area, small ones, and that is the Marathon School District. The overwhelming area within the town is 1952, School District Number One, and number two, that petition to come to Merrill. This, these, both these unique petitions filed and statutorily filed with the state of Wisconsin and your secretary certified describes the Merrill Area Public School District within Hamburg. Furthermore, from, from Attorney David's letter to your board, your superintendent, and your attorney, second, what was intended to be a full legal description is provided, and it is in this description that the unintentional omission occurs, period. On each petition on page E, page two, there is a long series of sections, past, quarters, many, many words that the president, Brian Blake, read the evening of the 17th, and it is in that particular description of three that Section 26 is unintentionally not there, an erroneous omission, a mistake. Third, finally, third, all parcels within the intended area are listed by number. I'd like to draw your attention to the front page of each petition. It's the second box, it's highlighted for you in blue. Legal description of territory proposed for detachment, including parcel numbers. Additional pages, please see attachment, E, page two, for the legal description of territory proposed for detachment, that's where the omission is. Please see E, page three through six for the parcel numbers. Parcel numbers, Marathon County identifies each parcel within the entire county with a number, a specific, unique number. There are hundreds of these numbers in the town of Hamburg. Every number, every number within your school district is in these documents. And every number in Section 26 is highlighted in the documents you now hold, and every number in Section 26 is on these documents. Clearly, Section 26 is not omitted from these legal documents. I'd like to help you through this process. It's Maple Grove Foundation's objective to help Maple Grove and to help MAPS and to help the people of this area. We are not adversaries, we seek a common goal, the education, the fulfillment of children's futures. I trust that this evening, you will significantly, when you meet together, responsibly review all the data and the information described tonight. And in that binder that's in front of you, that you will keep in mind, 810 signatures represent individual people who seek to detach to Athens, their generational home district. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have any clarifying questions for Peter from his presentation this evening? All right, thank you, Dr. Serby, thank you, Peter. Mike coming up next?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you could state your name on the microphone.
Mike Harris.
Petitioner and an owner, is that correct?
Petitioner and owner. Lectured some excerpts from an article written by Tim Selvin, he's president of Montessori Foundation with some additional information from a study by Jaden Healden at Harvard. To understand how schools grew from small neighborhood settings to modern shopping mall sized buildings, we have to remember that the first half of the 20th century, most of North America was fascinated with industrial efficiency. Henry Ford popularized the idea of the assembly line, when many management experts contributed to the idea of standardization of parts, setting performance expectations, laying out plans for making entire organizations more efficient. Whatever reasons explain the creation of large schools, today, there is a strong case to reverse the trend. Students in small schools provide, perform better academically, graduate at higher levels, are more likely to attend college and even higher salaries later in life. They participate more in extracurricular activities, have better rates of attendance, report greater positive attitudes towards learning, and are less likely to face school-related crime and violence. Their teachers report greater job satisfaction. Their administrators and teachers are often more able to identify problems, respond innovatively and efficiently, and adapt to change. Their parents and relatives are more likely to become involved in the school. Small schools are often characterized by personalized attention, curriculum integration, and specialization, relational trust and respect, a student's sense of belonging, a strong positive ethos, great, greater accountability, and sense of communal mission. In recent years, technology is often seen as the answer to improved education, forgetting the wisdom, the old truth. Tell me about something that I, tell me about something and I may quickly forget. Show me and I may remember and understand, but leave me to do something on my own, to experience it firsthand, and I will almost certainly remember it for a lifetime. Children learn best by doing, and they learn best of all within a school setting in which they feel safe, respected, and emotionally connected to their teachers and fellow students. This is very difficult to do in the school system that is obsessed with state mandated standards, constantly changing curriculum, high stakes, testing, and students who are trained to follow instructions rather than think deeply and become engaged in their education. There are obvious trade offs with such, with a smaller enrollment. With fewer students and teachers, it becomes difficult to offer as many extracurricular programs and widely varying courses of study. But how much is enough? Which is more important, a choice among 30 different social studies courses or a school in which you find your own voice, live and work within a strong supportive community, and as a young person feel that adults really listen and treat you with kindness, warmth, and respect? Today, many charter and private schools are offering families a greater range of choice. Smaller schools that put children at the center rather than lesson plans tend to create far more humane, kind, and effective educational outcomes in the long run, not only in terms of what can be measured on test scores, but in terms of the quality of relationships, character, and the ability to work together to get things done. Maple Grove has been doing that for over 100 years. People move out there, part of it is the scholarships, part of it is the school and the atmosphere. Please do the right thing and allow us to detach from the Merrill Area Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Hendricks this evening? All right, thank you. Next, I would invite Cindy Artis up to the microphone. She did provide a letter to the board, and since she was in attendance, I thought it appropriate to ask her to read it personally.
Please. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I read my letter, I would like you to know, those of you who don't know who I am, I've been born, I was born in Merrill and have been a Merrill Blue Jay, raised here for 59 years. So my support of the detachment, and the detachment from Merrill and attachment to Athens did not come easy for me, because as I said, I'm a true Blue Blue Jay, but my letter is written because I feel detaching, for Hamburg to detach from Merrill and attach to Athens is the right thing to do. And now I'll read my letter that I sent to you, and I also sent a copy of this letter to Peter as the president of the Maple Grove Foundation and Eric Vogel as the chairman of our township. I'm writing this letter in support of the township of Hamburg's detachment from the Merrill Area Public School District and detachment to the Athens School District. My husband is a 38-year resident of the town of Hamburg, and I became a resident of Hamburg when we were married in 1989, 31 years ago. We own approximately 240 acres of crock, forest, and residential property, a home, and an operating beef farm on two separate sections of the Hamburg Township. We have raised three children in Hamburg, two who attended Maple Grove Elementary School, and one, a special needs child, who attended Washington Elementary School in Merrill because at the time, special education services were not provided at our homeschool, Maple Grove. It should be noted here that special education services were not available until the residents and parents sought to make Maple Grove Elementary School a Wisconsin public charter school to prevent the Merrill Area Public Schools from closing the school several years ago. All three of our children graduated from Merrill High School, with the two that attended Maple Grove receiving the Walter and Mabel Fromm Scholarship. We are an involved couple in the Hamburg community, as are our children. One of our sons is a Town of Hamburg supervisor, our other son is a firefighter for the Hamburg Volunteer Fire Department, and our daughter volunteers every day in the kindergarten room at Maple Grove School, except of course for this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic restraints. My thought process in telling you these personal details of my life is to show you that we, as a family, like many Hamburg families, are completely invested in the town of Hamburg and our community. I would like to reiterate a comment that I made at the last hearing on February 18, 2021, regarding special needs children requiring various special needs therapies such as speech, physical, and occupational, as well as special, special education services. As a parent of a special needs child living in the Hamburg Township, our child was part of the special needs services offered by Marathon County, because Hamburg is in Marathon County. From birth to three years old, our child was serviced by Marathon County Special Education Services. During three year, these three years, we built a strong foundation with our therapists and teachers, as well as making connections and relationships with other special needs parents and families. with other special needs parents and families. When our child turned three, she was considered school age, and all her services were switched to the Merrill Area Public School District in Lincoln County. This was a very difficult transition, because now, after three years, we would be working with all new therapists and needing to make new connections with new families. Having a special needs child is already a difficult and complicated process. But by living in a township that is part of one county, and the school district being part of a different county, this process becomes even more burdensome. From the standpoint of families with special needs children, this is one more very important reason the township of Hamburg should be detached from the Merrill School District and attached to Athens School District. The Athens School District is in Maryland County, as is Hamburg. The Town of Hamburg is not a bedroom community, adjacent to a larger municipality. We are a rural community. Having an elementary school in our township is important to Hamburg, as it adds to the value of our property. It is a huge asset and attraction when families are looking for a beautiful country setting to live and raise a family. Having an elementary school in our township helps add to our tax base, which ultimately helps our town government provide increased and better services to its residents. It is important to our Hamburg Township to keep Maple Grove School open as a strong lifeline in our community. It is important to our Hamburg Township, I'm sorry, it is important that the Maple Grove School is one of, only a few hubs in our community. It is a place of collective involvement and pride in our community. The picturesque Little Red School has become an icon, a symbol by which the Town of Hamburg is recognized. For this school to cease to exist, the Merrill School District, as the Merrill School District is proposing in their budget plan, would be detrimental to the Town of Hamburg and its residents. For many, many years, the Town of Hamburg has faced rumors and near decisions of closing of the Maple Grove School by the Merrill Area Public Schools. The town residents and Maple Grove parents, including myself, have sought countless ways to stop this from happening. The most recent solution was for creating a public charter school within Maple Grove. According to a DPI representative, Maple Grove is considered one of the most successful public charter schools in the state of Wisconsin. And now, because of the Merrill Public Schools administration's inability to work with our Hamburg Township to ensure the Maple Grove School stays open as a public charter school, the taxpayers and voters of the township have found no other recourse but to file petition to detach from the Merrill Area Public Schools and attach to Athens. This is not a vendetta against Merrill Schools, but simply a way to ensure that Maple Grove School remains open and continues to be an asset to the township of Hamburg and surrounding communities. It should be noted here and highlighted that part of our township already is attached to the Athens School District. Detaching from the Merrill School District and attaching to Athens will place the majority of the township of Hamburg into one school district. American County Township as part of American County School District, the Athens School District, just makes sense. In August two thousand eighteen, a group of Hamburg residents, of which I am one of, and some Maple Grove alumni, met in the basement of St. Paul's Church to think of ways that we could assist the Town of Hamburg in its fight to keep Maple Grove an operating public school. At that meeting, the Maple Grove Foundation was formed. This foundation has since become a legally incorporated, nonprofit, C-103 organization with the sole purpose to raise funds through benefactors to enhance and promote learning at Maple Grove School. The Maple Grove Foundation has quickly become a successful and thriving organization filled with forward-thinking and financially sound benefactors. In two thousand nineteen, members of the Maple Grove Foundation Board of Directors met several times with Merrill Area Public Schools Administration to brainstorm ideas how the foundation could financially help the Merrill School District, and also to draw new students to Maple Grove, and ultimately to the Merrill School District. And repeatedly, any ideas, suggestions, and/or financial help were either not accepted by the administration or the administration would not be flexible in helping make the suggestions work to benefit the students, the Maple Grove School, the Merrill District, and the Hamburg Township. The foundation's mission remains intact, to enhance the learning at Maple Grove, no matter which school district it is affiliated with. The Maple Grove Foundation is one more way that demonstrates the high level of community concern and involvement the residents have in the Town of Hamburg and the Maple Grove School. The detachment of the Town of Hamburg from the Merrill Area Public Schools was not a decision that petitioners came to easily or lightly. But it is ultimately the only way we as taxpayers, landowners, and voters of Hamburg can ensure that the Maple Grove School remains open and continues to benefit all who are associated with it. Myself, as the Town of Hamburg taxpayer, landowner, and voter, ask you, the Merrill Area Public School Board members, to vote yes, to allow Hamburg to detach from Merrill. It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Do we ask if any board members have any clarifying questions from Ms. Artis? Alright, thank you. That was all of the forms that I had from petitioners. We asked clarifying questions along the way. I did not see from Tammy or anyone hand-delivering other public comment forms up here for any other members of the public or that are in attendance that wanted to speak this evening? Did I miss any forms at this time? So the next group would have been reading a written statement, and since Ms. Artis was here, we did ask her to read that since it fell into the petitioner columns. So we asked her to read that at that time. I did not have any other written comments provided, Tammy, is that correct? Alright. So at this time, I have a contemplative motion to move to close session to confer with legal counsel pursuant to Section nineteen point eight-five for N-1 per NG of the Wisconsin statutes concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved to appeal or any decision regarding one or more of the detachment requests in Section nineteen point eight-five for N-1 per NE Wisconsin statute to conduct specified public business, which for competitive or bargaining reasons requires a closed session with the division of, or sale of assets and the division of liabilities between the school districts in the event of the granting of one or more of the detachment petitions and to take action regarding the same. Do I have that motion this evening? Promotion by Maria, a second by Ron. Tammy, could I have a roll call vote please?
Lisa Yanklin, Nas Dashbuck.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Ossman.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria Bolfi.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Lee.
Aye. It's currently seven twenty-one PM at this time. We will head to close session, and we will then return for the rest of our agenda. Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening into open session of tonight's meeting. I know we have gone through all of our pink slips with public comment period, but at this time, I'm going to ask, before I close that period officially, if any board members had any additional questions for either the administration or petitioners, just one last time. Maria?
Just one quick question, to clarify a question about the scholarship. My understanding is that the criteria of the scholarship that the students would need to graduate from Merrill High School, what is the contemplation if there would be a detachment for that criteria?
Peter, if you'd approach the microphone.
There, thank you. Thank you Maria for the question, a very thoughtful question. The Walter and Mabel Fromm Scholarship is operated by the US Bank. The US Bank is the trustee and responsible party for that trust and operating the last will and testament of Walter and Mabel Fromm. The US Bank will move forward in that responsibility.
I appreciate that, I'm not sure it answers my question.
Please state your question. And your mic is not on, please.
Okay, am I on? Okay, sorry. I appreciate that, I'm just not sure it answers my question. My understanding is that the criteria for the scholarship to be awarded, it would need to be given to somebody who's graduated from Merrill High School, as well as attending Maple Grove or a successor school. So I guess I'm just wondering what the contemplation is for that criteria in the event of detachment would be? How would that affect the students that are currently eligible in the future, and how would it affect students who go to Athens High School who went to Maple Grove?
And from what I understand, your question is, and it's based on your understanding of the trust and the worthage. And that is key, because our understanding is an understanding, and the determination of that understanding will may well need to be determined by a judge. It is the Maple Grove Foundation Incorporated's interest to assist and to be an advocate for any student who went through Maple Grove or other students that may be eligible now or later in your understanding or a judge's understanding eligible for the Walter and Mabel Fromm Scholarship. As a family member, as a grandnephew of Walter and Mabel Fromm, I knew them. Their interest, their intent was to benefit children, specifically for Maple Grove. But their last intent and their last will and setup of the trust needs to be thought out and worked through. And so I hope the answer that you're hearing from me is the interest of those children and other children, we hope is invested in them and that they will benefit.
Okay, thank you, understood, thank you.
Any additional questions for either the petitioners or administration at this time? Alright, thank you. This time, I will close the public presentations on this petition for tonight's meeting and open the school board's deliberation with respect to information relevant to the petitions and the criteria set forth in one seventeen point one-five of Wisconsin statutes. Board of Education discussion will take place here in open session. The board will review each of the statutory criteria under one seventeen point one-five of the Wisconsin statutes, as well as other relevant criteria. Before we discuss the criteria, I'd like to address two additional things. First, the petitions presented to the board. The electors' petition, the district with the assistance of legal counsel reviewed the electors' petition to determine whether the petition was signed by a majority of the electors in the territory proposed for detachment. Three hundred and thirty out of five hundred and fifty electors signed the petition to approximately sixty percent of the electors. Owners petition, the district with the assistance of legal counsel reviewed the owners' petition to determine whether the petition was signed by the owners of fifty percent or more of the territory proposed for detachment. Total number of acres in the territory proposed to be detached is sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty-one point four-eight, which is at this time not including Section twenty-six, which we will get to later. The total owners' parcels associated with signatures is twelve thousand six hundred fifteen point five-two-seven, or seventy-five percent of territory. The district sent notices to all petitioners of the public hearings. Eight notices were returned and forwarded to address. This number does not significantly affect the calculations above, which should be noted for future correspondence. In regards to the Section twenty-six, based upon petition as a whole, including the header, the legal description, the parcel number lists the petitioner's stated intent, the clerk's total value calculation and signatures collected, Section twenty-six would be included in the petitions considered tonight. Next, we will be discussing and considering the criteria in Wisconsin statute, Section one seventeen point one-five. It should be noted that all board members received the written material submitted by the petitioners, administration, and written statements from the public prior to tonight's meeting in an effort to aid in the consideration and discussion of all relevant information. The first item that we will talk about for the statute is the geographic and topographical characteristics of the affected school districts, including the estimated travel time to and from school for pupils in these school districts. Do we have any deliberation or discussion on that particular section of the statute? Mr. Smith?
I guess I'll just obfuscate the board that my interpretation is that the travel time was pretty comparable between Athens and Merrill. Did they really play a role in fact or one way or another? Although it could be that the Hamburg residents that lived within three or four miles of the Maple Grove School that would then eventually have to transport into the Merrill District. So, I don't really consider that to be a factor that means one way or another, it's mutual as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other board members looking to comment or deliberate? How was the time on that particular statute section? Seeing no additional hands raised, I'll move on to the next, which is the educational needs. Of all the children residing in the affected school districts, the educational programs currently offered by each affected school district and the ability and commitment of each school district to meet those needs and continue to offer those educational programs. Any discussion on that particular portion of the statute? Brett, go ahead.
I guess I'd just like to maybe say for the record that I think, and I'd be a little bit biased, that I think Macs might be offering many more things for students to do. But I hope that whichever way this goes, they, encouraged by some of the data that we saw about open enrollment back to the district and Maple Grove does, and we do approve detachment. So, I think there's ample things the district has to offer over that of Athens, from my personal view. But I appreciate the information that you guys brought forward also today.
Thank you Brett. Any additional discussion on this particular? And I have Mr. Smith?
I'd say to the benefit that we had this second meeting, because the last meeting, I wouldn't be able to make the decisions that I can make tonight. In that, there was a lot of things discussed as far as what Macs has to offer. a lot of things to discuss as far as what MAPS has to offer as far as the breadth of extracurricular and curricular activities, but it gives me a lot of comfort to actually read these in front of me, that the Athens district, like any other district, has a wide variety of opportunities, and they do align with what is available at the high school, maybe not by the exact same mechanism, but things like AP and technical school, those are common languages between both organizations. So I thought it was, I'm far better at being able to make this decision with what was offered tonight. If this wasn't offered, then I would have a big decision gap.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other board members with discussion or dialogue on this particular topic? Otherwise, the third item is if territory is proposed to be detached from one school district and attached to an adjoining school district, whether the proposed detachment will have any adverse effect on the program currently offered by the school district on which the territory is proposed to be detached, including both curricular and extracurricular aspects of that program. So that speaks to the fiscal impacts that we heard from both petitioners and administration this evening again. Anyone have any dialogue they would like to have on this section of the statute? Mr. Smith?
I'll speak as treasurer. Between the two meetings, I did request the finances of Athens, and they were provided to me and included the audit last year, their current financial information, last statement. And included in that, which I read as a matter of due diligence, the district itself is a healthy financial district. Their current fund balance is about twenty-four percent, which that was, I think, one point five million dollars as compared to their expenses of six million dollars. So nothing stood out, there was no significant audit findings, except for this being a small school, they lack internal controls and oversight, so it's the same thing that we already for some of our processes here at MAPS. Well, one thing to note for the record is their cash balances in February about five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and so we have the same cash flow issues every year, and we go to, we short-term borrow to cover those. They didn't have any long-term debts, according to their audit, so it almost looks like they're solventing the whole cash flow. And so it's to whether or not the Athens school district can live within the five sixty-six without depleting it during the transition, that's completely up to them, of course, but from a standpoint, from a treasurer's report, it looks like a healthy financial district that we don't have to worry about that component.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any additional board members with dialogue or comment on this particular topic statute? All right, seeing no additional hands up, the next would be consideration of testimony of and written statements filed by the residents of the affected school districts. Anything people would like to discuss or deliberate on that at this time? The next topic would be the estimated fiscal effect of the proposed reorganization on the affected school districts, including the effect of the portionment of assets and liabilities. Any questions on that topic or portion here this evening? Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Again, I'll say for the record in regards to my role as treasurer, the information that was provided by the PMA organization that did the financial analysis reveals that the district would stand to gain financially during the transfer because of the reduction of expenses, and also that there's components of state funding that neutralize some of the impacts of enrollment laws because of the three-year average of enrollment. And so we'll still be state-funded at levels of enrollment that may decline, but of course we won't realize those declines for over three years. That's why, at least from my interpretation, the finances are very favorable on that three-year short term, and a five-year projection or four-year projection is just complete fiction anyways, because we don't know what the state legislator is going to do, we don't know any of the details of the enrollment situation. So that was almost surprising, because when you think about losing students to a different district, you think about losing money, but there are provisions in the funding that kind of protect districts from sudden shifts in enrollment that can happen for a whole bunch of reasons. Even this year, I believe, we're down a hundred students in enrollment, which would equate to about a million dollars. It didn't have an overwhelming effect on our budget, and actually we're in a fine position financially. The estimates, if you look at them, are near two million dollars, and so if you extrapolate that out into next year's budget, if the decision is made to detach, our organization might see a very significant surplus. And because surpluses can be bad, because they remove from state aid, it just reminds the board that we have Fund Forty-Six, which means we can spend the surplus and it won't affect our state aid, but it'll also finance our maintenance budget, which comes due in two years. So we created that, and there was a moratorium on how long we had to wait to use those funds, so any type of surplus could actually be fun, Fund Forty-Six, and then in a couple of years, we would have a large sum of money that we could do to maintain all of our maintenance projects. So it's a really, almost unforeseen financial situation to have it actually be able to fund our own maintenance.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith. Any additional board members' comments or dialogue for the record on this particular All right, seeing no additional hands raised, the next would be whether the proposed reorganization will make any part of the school district's territorial non-contiguous. As I stated on our intro, we're considering section twenty-six this evening included, so no part is non-contiguous for the points of this discussion. Anyone want to add anything on that topic? I think that's self-explanatory, otherwise we will move to the next, which is the socioeconomic level and racial composition of the pupils who reside or will reside in territory proposed to be detached from one school district and attached to an adjoining school district. The proportion of the pupils who reside in such territory or children at risk is defined under state statute 118.15, paragraph one, per N.A., and the effect that the pupils describe in this paragraph will have on present and future socioeconomic level and racial composition of the affected school districts, and on the proportion of the affected school district's enrollments that will be children at risk. So we've heard those reports included by administration and petitioners as well. Anyone want to share anything on that particular topic? Keeping in mind, the board also could consider information from other sources, including matters within its knowledge and expertise. Both sides, petitioners and administration, talked about that, what they provided, including but not limited to numbers of families in the proposed area who signed petitions, we've heard data on that, number of families with six through twelve graders, and effect on those students, scholarship information, survey information, and other information provided as requested. So at this time, we have opportunity to share our thoughts. Any of those additional sources or discuss anything new that way this evening? Mr. Smith, go ahead.
This seems like a point in the discussion where we can share perhaps some of our own insight based on experiences. I wanted to share, especially to the people in the audience, that this is an extremely difficult decision, and part of the decision is that this particular board has been elected to always put the Merrill's best interests ahead of, well, against everything else, really go for the Merrill Area Public Schools and students, and so the concept of detachment's been very difficult for me. But I also am a strong proponent of local control and will of people, and so when I hear the word petition and I see signatures, that is the public's, you have a right to do this, the state statute is written, to engage and to allow citizens to basically govern themselves, and on a personal note, that's very, very important to me. And so the struggle was, for myself, is that in order to recognize the will of the people, I may have to set aside my responsibilities as a board member to the Merrill Area Public School and their students. And throughout this process, even though it's seemingly painful, and there were some insinuating concepts that we couldn't think this way, we wouldn't be able to think this way, which I have taken to insult and have already forgiven, it, this is the process, and we're experiencing the process, and it's so well-balanced, because you had your opportunity to present your information, administrations had their opportunity to present their information, and then we have to make a decision. And so as painful as the process was, I would like to just simply state that I think it was well-done, and I think I know how I would like to vote, and I think all of that can be done and comply with all of our responsibilities. So I thank you for your efforts. I think it's admirable that you believe in something as much as you do, and that it's a township issue as much as it is a school issue, and I want to go and say that I respect that, because we lack community oftentimes in our society, and you are demonstrating this, and I think Peter alluded to it, we're not adversaries, and how this ends and when this ends, I think we need to keep that in strong mind. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other board members like to take this opportunity to add anything, either for the record or to share on this topic? Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm done saying right now, this has been a very, very difficult situation. We have to think about the kids here in town, we have to think about the kids out by you guys as well, and how it's going to affect everybody in the big picture, you know, so I am going to go with what I feel is what is the best decision on my part tonight, and that's going to be best for both parties, because not only is it feel like we're destroying each other's communities, I want to leave on a good note and be able to still get along with the Hamburg community, and, you know, and for you guys to still want to have a relationship with us as well. So, yeah, I think this is probably one of the difficult decisions that I've had to make as board member tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any additional board members like to say anything at this time? Brett, go ahead.
I just thought of this, actually, I'm walking back down here. I think maybe two years ago, I was sitting over there and I made a comment on how I was in second grade when Scott School closed down, and my argument at the time, and I also kind of stand behind, is that my school that I love closed down, and there was nothing I could really do about it, and I kind of liked that, like John said, that class to hold you too, for if I had, if Scott School had a base like yourselves to keep that building open, I know that there would have been a lot more happy second graders in that classroom, and I'm just very excited to be able to finally hopefully put this all back and forth to the end, so.
Thank you, Brett. Any additional board members? We have the opportunity to comment at this time. I would just like to add, before we go into the explanation quickly of the board action coming up, that, and I think we've heard it from board members, Smith and Yingling already, professionalism by both sides, the gathering of data, I personally also am, well, no one wanted a second night of public hearing, a lot of the data was provided that we either needed to be asking for upfront before the first time, and both parties did not ask each other what we wanted, but we put that aside to work that first night to get to tonight. Everyone presented their information professionally, answered questions in kind as administration, as petitioners alike. We've heard heartfelt letters from members of the community, we've heard concerned citizens speaking that have perhaps different needs or beliefs with their kids that have already been alumni of Maple Grove, so we've heard a lot of different data, and a lot of people filled out a survey, to get surveys, nineteen out of thirty, thirty-one that were sent, doesn't seem like a lot, but most surveys, when you send out, you're hoping for thirty or thirty-five percent, you're considering that very successful. That spoke to me as well, even though we narrowed it to three agreeable questions at the time to gather some data, and we did that. So regardless of the next motion and vote, like you said, we are working together, we're not adversaries, let's keep that in mind as we go forward for all parties, boards, administration. So I will explain at this time, the Board of Education action. So as we know, the relevant statutory provisions indicate that the Board of Education should take action by resolution. The board may pass a resolution granting the request for transfer of the territory described in the petitions, or the board may pass a resolution denying the request for transfer of the territory described in the petitions. There will be multiple motions. One will address the electors' petition, and we will have a roll call vote, then we will have one for the owners' petition, in either order, depending on board members' motions. I believe every board member has an understanding of the procedure, so that was for the good of the order. At this time, I would ask if any board members are looking to motion a resolution. Mr. Smith, go ahead, you have the floor.
Whereas Clayton Neskey and the electors who have signed the petitions, the petitioners have filed with the Merrill Area Public Schools, MAPS, a petition to alter the school district's boundaries pursuant to Wisconsin statute 117.12 regarding the territory described in the documents attached heretofore as exhibit A petition and located in MAPS, including section twenty-six, and whereas the petitioners represent that they together constitute a majority of the electors owning or residing in the area described in the petition, and whereas the Board of Education has met with the petitioners pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 117.12, paragraph three, and provided the petitioners with the opportunity to present their reasons for the proposed reorganization, and whereas the Board of Education has considered all factors And whereas the Board of Education has considered all factors set forth under Wisconsin Statute 117.15, that such factors affect the educational welfare of all children residing in and of all the affected school district, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education grants the electors' petition filed by the petitioners, and that in order is to be issued granting reorganization, this resolution is based upon the criteria set forth on Exhibit B attached heretofore.
We have a motion by board member Smith, second by Kendra Ossness. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Or clarifying questions on the motion? Seeing no hands raised, I would ask Tammy to assist us with the roll call vote at this time, please.
Linda Yingling. Aye. Nostie Ashbuck.
Aye.
Ron Lively.
Aye.
Kendra Ossness.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Motion carries unanimously. I would ask at this time if we have any additional motion?
Whereas, Ellen Stigler and the owners who have signed the petition, petitioners, have filed with the Merrill Area Common Public School District, MAPS, a petition to alter school district boundaries pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 117.12 regarding the territory described in the documents attached heretofore as Exhibit A petition and located in the MAPS at Section 26. And whereas the petitioners represent that they together constitute fifty percent of the owners of the area described in the petition, and whereas the Board of Education has met with the petitioners pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 117.12, Paragraph 3, and provided the petitioners with the opportunity to present their reasons for the proposed reorganization, and whereas the Board of Education has considered all the factors set forth under Wisconsin Statute 117.15, that such factors affect the educational welfare of all the children residing in all the affected school districts, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education grants the owners' petition filed by the petitioner, and that in order be issued granting reorganization. This resolution is based on the criteria set forth in Exhibit B attached theretofore.
Do we have a motion by Ron Lively? Do we have a second? Second by Linda Yingling. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, once again. Tammy, would you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Nostie Ashbuck.
Aye.
Ron Lively.
Aye.
Kendra Ossness.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously on a roll call vote. Pay a reminder for all board members to stay after adjournment. We have some paperwork to handle. At this time, I would ask for a final motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion by Maria, second by Linda, to adjourn as of 9:11 PM. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say a name. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.